...for the introduction and thank you for the patience and the possibility to talk about and music and I'm very, very interested in the going of scores, with pressure emotions regarding raising international solutions. So this is what I want to talk about. And I wish to mention that it's important to compare between scores and talk about the quality and professional performances. So I compared the score with what is what is something, some reality of the score.
Yeah, that would not be easy.
A little footnote, performance is of a song, performance of a song is that is a piece of art. And a piece of art should have a quality of uniqueness. It should be a repeat of an existing art. A piece of art should be something with something, or itself. And therefore, the finding statistical significance trends not to make you concerned when you analyze the performance of songs. That is a credit that I have to round it to. Okay, okay. My doctor collection looks like this. Four points. One was an experiment where we had an international baritone perform two versions of peaceful and exciting excerpts in two ways, as though as though as it could and as in a linear concept. And then we selected the material that we wanted in that manner. And just one. One experiment selected the pairs of versions that were most different in expressiveness. We had three differences in expressiveness. And then another pair was selected in extra text that we classified as exciting piece or peaceful. The second experiment was different. It was with two international baritones. And they were setting scales portraying ten emotions. And the drop of pressure with noise source were analyzed. And that study was published, made together with those collaborations with Klaus Scherer in Geneva. Analysis processes is the third source of information. And that is that you plug a music score into the computer. And then we have the computer play exactly what was written in the score. And we listen to it. And then we had a plattetic musician who was trying to teach the computer, play it more or less orally. So and then I converted these recommendations into root systems. So that I apply the rules in the recommendation. And then with the game, we had the computer performance, we listened to it. And then called the recommendation. And that recommendation was modifying the rule, throwing it away because it was failing. Okay, okay. So that was analysis processes through synthesis, performance, and that is the way of analysis. And analysis of common recordings, that is, of course, you just see how close the music score, the performance, and your excerpts are. I think, okay, so first, what is that is of score? Parenthesis on emotions. According to Hickman, on basis of components analysis, emotions can be grouped into families. Family emotion. So one family is anger and contempt. And one is joy, love, pride. And one is fear and sad. And one is calm and tender. Okay, so they are different classes groups of. Just there, okay. Now we go and look at regarding emotions. Here in Nigeria, I used here what is the two baritones, the exciting scales. And here, we look at what they were doing according to two physiological parameters. One is the global reduction, parameter reflecting global reduction, global pressure. And the other one is the global pressure. But let's see why these families appeared in these two performances of these rising scales. But if we have family joy, love, pride, and this is the global pressure and the global reduction. Here is extremely, really, that is the anger and contempt by the way. Circus is one singer and stars his chorus, who wears his. And then the third group, they calm and they're tender and neutral. They came in these other extremes as compared to the act of contempt. So that was systematic distribution of two physiological control parameters for all sorts. That was clear with the family emotions. And then the fear, sadness, the point of sadness, the system, one singer played here, and fear, and the other one is a stage to speak. But yet it's clear that there was a correlation, interaction of the pressure and the reduction for separating behind the four patterns of emotions. So of score variations was that elected the distribution of the global pressure and the combination. Next chapter, we look at this. While we have an international baritone, we can classify it as expressive. From Paudus. And how did now the singer perform? Here we have here the distribution from nominal duration. And here we have. Tapping. Tapping. So this is then how the things, the dominant things of the tone in comparison with normal. A bit short, a bit shorter. First note was shorter. And then the third note was according to the notes. Sometimes it was slowing down towards the end of this group. And then it was cleaning up. And then it's slowing down towards the end of the next group, and so on and so forth. So there's a systematic variation of deviation from nominal duration in the expressive version. And the amazing aspect of this was that he was then was doing one was exactly the same, but less when he was doing it neutral. So that suggested to me that probably this marking, the structural structure is very deeply rooted. It's difficult to get rid of. So off score variation tells you. Okay, so then another story was I did with Virilio. And we studied the final ritadano in twenty-four commercial recordings of music. You have a normal instant tempo and normal time. So Rita D'Amato started there. And he was the final chord. And this was the duration of the ritadano, the normal. So and this was a beautiful curve of twenty-four recordings. So the off score variation in this case was total duration. Okay, okay. If you have another more off score discussion, here we have the sum to nominal duration. So when it is one, it has no change to all the duration from the normal. What was the example? And in the neutral version, there was not very much drama in the duration of the notes. But look at what happened in the expressive. Then this is this, the second, the third, and so on. Shorter. Shorter. And the neutral version. And this very note. Who was that? Was the. That one was extremely. Things that in the expressive. I will turn this actually goes into this. I'm very charmed by that deviation. Okay, okay. And then this is also a surprising and entertaining example of. Six per four. Six per four. This is something. Yeah. That means, okay, so here I have the intonation of the. The green one is equal in tempo tuning according to the common temperament. And this is then singer one studio recording. And then singer in one, nine recording, which you just heard. And here you see the intonation that was around seven cent sharp, well above the boundaries to the negative scale. And what if the other one, seven, six, here is two there, fifty-nine, that nine, and in the studio recording, in the name of charm. And here just ten cent sharp. So I wondered if that was. Inch correcting studio engineer to add that. Okay, so that was off score variation was the calling intonation, for sure. Here I looked at the sound of the baritone for neither excerpt, that's my expression. We looked at these good examples. And we saw what is it, deviation between expressive and neutral versions. So how did this take the intonation of difference expressive and neutral? What was the difference in intonation between expressive and neutral? And here I have his full sample. So the rather modest deviation, differences between expressive and neutral, between intonation and here you have then the. The deviation between expressive and neutral was very small for the peaceful. And what tone was it? It was the peak tone of a phrase, the peak tone, the top tone. And here was except for the exciting examples, it was again raising the intonation, it was sharply sharp in this exciting example. Was the difference in peaceful and exciting songs in intonation, score variation regarding the intonation? Yeah, yeah. And now to the second question. Was communicated this, this evidence differences? Okay, so let's go to the emotional aspect, okay? So what we did before this distribution of emotional families, emotional families within contempt appear with a high drop of pressure and high global grid reduction and neutral. So this, so this, so it is a structured distribution of values, values, combination that he used in order to vary the expressivity. So you could say this was this way to communicate the emotional ambience of the. You remember that this was two singers who were portraying different emotions in singing scales. A very tough. No, for the last three experiments, they wanted that way. Now, next example, the ritadano. Of course, this is a very structured melody. Most of you have to find the musical music. You could say that this is the beat that belong together in the same form as slums phrase, together with the sad phrase. We hear that they belong together. And that is there. So then they perform phrases in a hierarchical structure. And here's another sub phrase, and then they. So and then to vary the deviation from nominal duration in a way that selects some phrase and the phrase built when you come to the end. Sub phrase. Slow down. Slow down the tempo a bit. And then if you come to the end of the phrase, you're slow down. Slow down a bit more. A bit more. Okay, so that is it. You could say then what you do, what the singer does is to communicate the phrase structure. The structure is so ungood, then make experiment, thinking. What would happen if he was observing this sub phrase and was happy saying, how would that sound? How would that sound as you understand a phrase as a phrase? So that was the problem. Now, this is my favorite. The final ritadano was then clearly sending the message, this is the end of the structure. We won't continue after this. And that could be a new point of information also. And I returned a third time to this example. And what about this? Looking at the lyrics, it was the. And you vanished in it, evil. To one. To one. And it is obvious that evil, that is the main word in that phrase. And so that was then marked by delay, the delay in its arrival in time. By a little bit. So you can say that you lengthen the upbeat to the main word. And I like to take sure that the emphasis on delayed arrival and that is not only singing music and singing class and something, everybody looks at. Communicating is important. And then the third effect of this is the code. I mean, it's very important for artists to use a code that is well known and that the audience is acquainted with, that way it totally gets performed. Okay, so let's go back. And here I would like to use another aspect of emotions. And here also from the Afshir gang in. Geneva? Geneva. So on the basis of the artistic case international studies of what emotion terms mean, they create a system that attributes factor scores along five dimensions. And that is speech of speech, okay? So each very important dimension in this grid system, the balance goes from good to bad. And the power, how powerful you feel from a very powerful mind to force that. And then arousal is going, of course, from excited to the calm. So this is another alternative way of grouping emotions. You could sing, where you can, the emotions that the two singers were singing, they distribute that flow, how low power is still with. And what does it mean, this low potential range of a piece of that is. An deduction measure. Measure. So let's think one that this is then related to the global deduction. And here is the balance score according to the grid system. Speech. And to see a grouping here and a systematic coordination between the score and this physiological unit of connection. So that was for the balance. And then for the power, that we found one or actually more. But this is one example of the physiological voice source control factors that was varying systematic with the power scores of power. Yeah, with power scores in speech. Again, a nice R square. And this was not so a nice R square, but it was this far above random. And here we have the arousal and the physiological factor. Here is the mean sound level that is reflecting basically the global pressure. Okay, so there was a systematic variation of voice source parameters that were related to the factor scores of balance, power, and arousal. So how funny was that? Well, the code is well known from speech because this grouping of emotions was based on speech. Okay, so that was it. And what is this then? That was the marking of the structure by speeding up beginning of units and slowing down towards the end of each unit. Bigger slowing down to longer units. And this is exactly the same as we have in speech also. It's called final lengthening, final phrase lengthening, according to. But I told you that was this analysis by synthesis. So let's enjoy a little example here. And I play you deadpan of the deadpan, no expressivity at all. And this is generated by the computer and the rule system. And all the performance rules are here switched to zero. This is how it sounded. Now it's a little shy. And with this rules, with this phrase rule applied, it sounded like this. And with this rules, with this phrase rule applied, it sounded like this. Some people believe that you could play music. Performance is not very informative because you could play a melody or piece in any way. You could do whatever you like. And it would be good provided that you are a gifted musician. So in order to show how erroneous that is, we turned the phrase marker upside down. So nobody would play that. Now let's go on to the lengthening emphasis by delayed arrival. This is the singer case that you saw. This was the devotion, the evil. This was the emphasized tone. And this was the lengthened upbeat. So we wanted to see if this was a common possibility also. The speech, so we asked a kind actor to pronounce the short sentence on Thursday, he should tidy, shifting the emphasis to on Tuesday, he should tidy, and he should tidy. You have a neutral version here. And then stressing Tuesday. It was obvious. And we measured that also in this case, the emphasis by delayed arrival is applied in order to emphasize. Okay, so emphasis by delayed arrival is certainly used both in singing and in speech, well known from speech. And yeah, how picky are we about arriving in time? That is a fascinating ability that we have. I would play here nine, and then about two hundred milliseconds long. And this tone, I will move first by zero milliseconds, and then gradually more and more milliseconds. So here is the sequence. So here is the sequence. So in 30 milliseconds delay, then you suddenly note that there is something going on. And mostly if you do it in a decent and controlled way, you find that people start to note that there is something happening here when a tone is between five and 10 milliseconds late or early. So it's an enormous sensitivity. The just noticeable delay of a tone in a sequence with isochronous tones 200 milliseconds long, that is no more than seven milliseconds for people. So that adds that little parenthesis. Now we go to the final ritadando. And what happened, from where do we get that? Well, we get it from locomotion. We asked four ballet dancers to run on the floor and we recorded with video and audio. And then they had to stop at a certain point in the floor. And one thing that was important also, that we gave them step frequency. So they varied with long steps and slow frequency and so on. So got a good material, other three, like and our pretty and alive. And this was then the average ritadando curve that I promised to return to. And here I do it because this is the change of body speed that is very similar to the ritadando. So normal instant tempo and normal instant velocity was almost a copy. So it seemed that the code for the final ritadando was taken from locomotion. When we stop locomotion, this is what happens with the speed. So I would say that the final ritadando, that is an iconic code. It is the physical form of the code reminds of the origin. It's not, it is running and it is music. Okay, now summarizing a bit. What information does expression convey? Well, emotional coloring, of course, because we have seen examples of that in this material. And the emotional coloring is also something that happens in speech. The coding was similar to speech. And structure and phrasing, that is not only in singing and playing music, that phrasing is marked. That is also what happens in speech. And respond to leons, find important and or should find important and put a marker that for instance by delayed arrival. And that is what was also happening in speech with the "he should tidy". Okay, and how is the information coded? Well, emotional ambience, they were taken from speech with the grid system, for instance, and valence, arousal and power. That was taken from speech. And that was applicable to the two paritose singing escapes on R in 10 different emotions. Final lengthening phrasing, well, that is also in speech. And ritadando, that was taken directly from running. And by the way, it's not only humans that stop motion when they are running, also other animals do it. And sudden parameters change, that is a marker of something remarkable. It catches the attention of the listener if something is going, sounding differently. And delayed arrival, absence of valence, yeah. So welcome to go off score, but only if with the aim of conveying expression. If you have no aim with your going off the score, you are a bad artist because people say that that was a mistake. Okay. Emotional ambience, musical structure and emphasis are important events. Three important tasks of a singer to observe in a performance.
Thank you, Dr. Sundberg. And last but certainly not least, I am excited to welcome Dua Hakepa, who is a lecturer at the University of Turkey, Nokturku, with interest in vocology, improvisation, listening and acoustical ecology, giving a talk titled "A vocologist's approach to teaching emotional expression in singing, bringing science into pedagogical practice." Welcome.
Hello. So my story is about my PhD project, where I investigated acoustic emotions and devised a training protocol to train emotional expression to voice quality in singing. The emotions that I've been working with are these joy, tenderness, sadness and anger. And they're sort of basic emotions. Well, tenderness technically isn't, but it fits so nice in the valence arousal scale that it got to tackle on the wing. For the purpose of this presentation, we will focus more on the activation or arousal axle. This presentation is about artistic emotion expression in singing. So we are talking about artistic representations of voiced emotion as opposed to real emotion or regular emotion expression. And the final thing that I want to say is that I'm discussing information that can be tracked from the acoustic signal. So no like muscle things or just what we hear. Okay, so for my PhD project, I did these three studies. The first study that we did was about recognizing emotion from short voice samples, some in either using the so-called classical singing techniques or another technique labeled in our study as CCM singing. We had six classically trained female singers and one male classical singer. And then we had five singers trained as popular music singers plus one male. Some of the singers, six to be exact, felt that they were fluent in both styles and they gave singing samples in both styles. The task was to sing a piece of music expressing emotions of joy, tenderness, sadness, anger and a neutral state for comparison. I built a listening test extracting vowel A's from three different pitches for each emotion. The samples were randomized for each listener and the listeners picked an emotion or neutral from a forced choice scale. All of the listeners listened through the whole sample package, 300 samples per listener. And this is how I got to that number down there, 9,048 answers given in that listening test total. And from that data, I did the statistics. Binomial test for evaluating whether the listeners guessed or viewed the answer. Key score to evaluate the probability that two groups of listening test results had the same percentage of correctly recognized emotions. So we used it to compare the answers given to classical samples versus the answers given to CCM samples. And the chrombox to evaluate internal listener consistency. The results of this study lend support to the idea that we can indeed hear emotions from the singing voice, although not with the same accuracy as how we recognize them from speaking voice. Recognition seemed to be a little bit easier from CCM samples, although sadness was better recognized from classical samples. And pitch was a factor in emotion recognition. High pitched voices were more likely to be evaluated as joy or anger and low pitched voices as sadness. The second study was about the content of voice quality when expressing emotions in singing. I had a little bit of grief with the men in the previous study because there were only two of them and it messed up my statistics. So I chucked them off. And in this study, I only have 11 female singers. Again, the same six singers who were fluent in both classical and CCM singing, they gave samples in both styles. So the total samples analyzed for this study was 270. We analyzed following parameters using Praat software and we did statistics with Aramanova. So fundamental frequency didn't give anything really, didn't give anything interesting. We originally thought that it might give some like microtonal fluctuation for emotion, but that didn't happen. SPL was indicative of emotion expression and it worked so that in high energy emotions, it was higher, in low energy emotions, it was lower. And this was true for both CCM and classical singers. Performance, especially F1, was found to be statistically significant differentiator of emotion for both styles. For high energy emotions, F1 was higher and in low energy emotions, F1 was lower. Overall, the form and structure was more compact in high energy emotions, so the formants packed closer together. And in low energy emotion, they dispersed. Jitter and Shimmer both showed a little bit of promise in Aramanova, but their effects vanished when factoring in the SPL and fundamental frequency in univariate analysis. Only shimmer, ABU5 and amplitude vibrato remained a significant effect for CCM samples. The interesting thing, at least for me, in this data was that both Jitter and Shimmer increased in the low energy emotions and decreased in the higher ones, hinting at more difficulty maintaining periodic oscillations in lower volumes. Alpha ratio increased in high energy emotions and decreased in lower energy emotions. In this study, alpha ratio was larger in the CCM samples than in the classical ones, which probably indicates a bigger tolerance towards a more sort of pressed phonation style in CCM music. The Aramanova showed significant differentiation for emotions in both classical and CCM singing styles, but after the univariate analysis, the effects remained only for CCM samples. HNR similarly showed effects in Aramanova for both styles, but they were erased after testing with the univariate analysis. Sustain time was found to differ significantly between the emotions in the CCM samples, which might just indicate a more lenient attitude towards notation in general. Then the third study featured a different dataset. At the time that this study was made, I happened to be teaching singing at one of the two theater schools in Finland. And I conveniently got the data from my students. There were three females and three male students, all of whom had had minimum two years of singing lessons prior to this experiment. And then I got super lucky because one of my colleagues was working at the other theater academy in Finland and I got a control group, similar, like super similar, control group from there. The protocol was like it had been in the earlier studies. The participants sang a short melody with four different emotions in a neutral state. I extracted both A vowels and short phrases for the listening test. This time, I only extracted one pitch, F4 females and F3 for males. Because I thought that it would be nice because the previous study had shown that the high pitched gave evaluations that were towards anger and joy and the low pitched gave evaluations that were towards sadness. So the middle would be like a good neutral point to investigate. I had two recording sessions. And in between them, I did a teaching intervention for the test group. The control group went on their business as usual. And they both had a nine weeks gap in between the recordings. The teaching intervention was based on the information I accumulated from the previous dataset and other research literature as well. Basically, what I did was that I trained the parameters that had been identified as key markers of emotional expression in singing. So SPL is found to be a strong indicator of emotional expression in singing. You will find that the differentiation in SPL levels will affect the recognition of emotion from the singing voice. And if you have a set of low energy and high energy emotions, you will most likely adjust your SPL accordingly. Volume is also quite easy to adjust. And if not everyone, then almost everyone sort of has this capacity readily available. We know that the way to control dynamics happens through these three elements. Subclotic pressure, which you do by adjusting your breathing mechanism and vocal cords. And we know it's a little bit like lifting something or making a cup cup. But we also know that people do the required movements differently and they respond to instructions differently. So whatever works for you, use that. Then we have the medial compression of vocal folds, which you do by increasing and decreasing tension in your throat area. And finally, there's your resonator, that's your pharynx and oral cavity and changing their configurations. You can help the voice sound louder and take some pressure off your throat. And now, ta-da, we experiment a little. I have picked the third song, number seven here. So if you please, I'll sing it first, you'll sing it second. Nice. Okay, so we try with this thumb thermometer. Here being the quietest sound that you can make and here the loudest. We start from the middle. Wow, you are very skillful. Well, now, as you may have already noticed, there are a bunch of other things happening at the same time that you control your volume. And that's normal, that's how the voice works. For example, I have to sort of shield my voice a little bit because I've had a history of overusing my voice. So I tend to do a little bit of twangy sound when I go louder, just to shield it. And I do it even if it doesn't comply to the aesthetics of a certain singing style, because I want to protect my voice. This is just something that I wanted to bring up because when you are expressing emotion with your singing voice, you're always sort of deviating from your good singing technique. It's a change to your perfect technique, and you have to be mindful when you start playing with these parameters, especially if you're teaching young and eager students who are willing to put in the work and do like extra hard singing. So sometimes it's necessary that you tell them that a little bit less is safer for you for now. Then we have alpha ratio and HNR, which I now boldly group into one lump. Alpha ratio reflects the mean strength of the higher spectrum partials as compared to the lower ones. It gives you a number that reflects the distribution of sound energy across frequency bands, and it's perceptually tied to sound qualities related to vocal fold aduction. I usually describe this as using the terms pressed and breathy, but I know that some voice teachers like to substitute pressed with a less vocally harmful term. Another measurement that falls under the same category from a voice teacher's point of view is the harmonics-to-noise ratio, which is the measure that detects the periodic and non-periodic components in a voice segment. The more the periodic signal is present in the sound, the clearer the sound is. And if there's a lot of noise in the signal, the sound becomes coarse. Now, the way you make the sound breathy or pressed or something in between is by increasing or decreasing the force of aduction in the vocal folds. And we know from previous research that we do it by moving lateral retinoid muscles, the intererretinoid muscle, and the posterior retinoids. But we also know that we can't really very consciously move them. So the way that we do it in the voice studio is by listening, mimicking, and coming up with our own scale. We will also try this one. So here is the breathiest you can get. Here is the pressed, pressed version. Be careful with the pressed, but do go a little bit over your normal order because in that way, you will get sort of more out of your voice. There we go. Let's start from the middle. Nice. Okay, then we move on to formants. Formants are distinctive frequency components of the acoustic signal produced by singing or speech. They result from the resonances of the human vocal tract, and thus, their appearance or the way that they show up is dependent on the shape of our constantly moving vocal tract. In speech, we use formants to make different vowels, but we can also use them to make the sound brighter or darker. And this following thing is something that we can do in a voice studio to enhance emotion expression. Research has shown that the bigger the chamber the voice travels through, the lower the formant frequencies emerge, and the darker the voice color will get. And vice versa, if you make the inside of your vocal tract very narrow, the higher the formants will appear, and the brighter your tone color will get. So again, we practice. Here is the brightest you can get. Here is the darkest you can get. And we start from the middle. Nice. Good. Okay. And then lastly, we have perturbation in vibrato. Well, this is a tricky, tricky area because the research is, there's a little bit of mixed results in this, but I like to use it in my voice teaching because this is the area where I can group everything like distortions or little extra things that you can do with your voice. These are issues that have been used in many studies of vocal emotion expression, and there has been evidence that they are contributing factor in emotive speech and singing. But they don't really readily let themselves to the use of voice studios because I think it's quite impossible to willingly produce cycle-to-cycle variations in your singing voice. But the sort of healthy equivalent of Jitter and Shimmer is different kinds of vibrato that you can do in your singing. And so we try the vibrato. Here being no vibrato at all, and here being extra much. Fun. Okay, so once the students have these four things sort of together, we can move towards emotion expression via the parameter modulation. It's of course a little superficial and a cut corners type of way to approach emotion expression. But in my experience, this kind of compartmentalizing is usually quite eye-opening for the students. Of course, I mainly work with beginner students, so maybe this isn't the case with advanced students. But my students usually find it very, very helpful when they have these four concrete planes to work on or eight directions of where the voice can go. So we move towards emotion expression using approximated voice profiles that stem from acoustic research. So you can take a look at what acoustic parameters are typical for set emotions, like here, in joy. We can see that Sun Beryetal have found that the level of loudness is towards high rather than low. And both Sun Beryetal and Jensens have found that the spectral slope is shallow-flat, indicating a sound balance more towards pressed than breathy. Then we see that Scherer, Sun Berytal, and others have found that formant frequencies tend to be higher rather than lower in joy, indicating a brighter timbre. And finally, in the effect sector, they found that perturbation level is high. I found that it is low. So, well, you have a little bit of information, and then you just have to sort of convert it to singeries. So the way we do loud, you do good, nice support. Then we know that there's a shallow slope, so maybe you add a little bit more aduction. We see that the formants are higher and close together. It indicates a brighter sound. Maybe you do it by lifting your larynx, see that your tongue isn't in your throat, maybe put a smile on your face. And then vibrato, some say a lot. I say not so much, so you can take your pick. And once again, we try Sillele with a happy tone color. And then basically, what you do is you just go through your emotions like this. So tenderness, Sun Beryetal finds less volume, steeper spectral slope, less energy on the higher partials, and perturbation, again, not consistent. So you make your singing sound a little bit softer, maybe add a little bit breath to your vocal attack. You can still keep your smiley face, make it maybe a little bit more like Mona Lisa to get a little bit darker timbre, and different results in perturbation, so you can take your pick. And again, Sillele. Let's go. Oh, that was lovely. Really nice. Way to go. Okay, sadness. Sun Beryetal found less loudness, but loudness bursts. This is a fun one. Jensens found steady dynamics. Might be just the differences of expression or expressive possibilities in sadness. Sometimes it goes inward, sometimes it's like very desperate sadness. Steep slope indicating a breathier sound. But again, you can try with the occasional bursts of aduction. It will give a nice effect. Generally, formants are lower in sadness, so you tend to get a darker voice quality, which you can try with elongating your vocal tract, make your lips a little bit rounder and move them away from your face. You can deliberately pull back your tongue. And here, I suggest that you experiment with excessive vibrato to make it sound super sad. Okay, and we see. Perfect. And finally, in anger, we are back to loud volume, phonation more towards pressed. You can try hard vocal attacks or the voice-friendly option of over-articulating. And because this loud anger, it mimics a little bit like shouting, so the tone color can be towards bright, maybe a little bit. You can try clean vibrato or even distortions if you know how to do them safe. Ah, very nice, very nice. So this was basically the listening test or the teaching intervention that I did. And now, back to the study itself. After the students had completed their regime, we did another set of recordings. Then I compiled a listening test that featured 120 ah vowels and 120 phrases, and I managed to get 32 people to listen through them. So again, I had 8,160 listening test answers to use in my statistical analysis. We analyzed SPL, alpha ratio, HNR, F1 through F4, Jitter and Shimmer from all of the voice samples, and we used the non-parametric equivalent of Aramanova for statistical deduction. And then, for the listening test, we used one proportion Z to evaluate whether the listeners knew or guessed the answers. Unrelated samples, T-test, was used to compare the number of correct answers given in the listening test between the test group samples and the control group samples. And G Squared was used to determine if there was any difference in the recognition between first and second recording. The results of this study were as follows. With no big surprise, the intended emotions were easier to recognize from longer samples. Longer samples contain more information, and some of it overlaps, so it's easier to recognize. My test group performed better in the after condition according to the number of emotion expression recognized by the listeners than they had done in the before condition. Especially thrilling was the decrease in neutral evaluations in the after conditions, which we took as an indicator of better emotional intelligibility after training. The same effect wasn't visible after regular active student training. In fact, the control group performed much worse in the after trial. The decrease of neutral result only happened in the vowel samples. It wasn't visible in the phrases. But of course, we then interpreted that because the teaching intervention was specifically built to train voice quality in emotion expression, the vowels would be the place where this training would show. The phrases already have so many other components that voice quality gets mixed up with other elements in the singing voice. And overall, the recognition percentage was better in the test group also in the phrases after. On this data was that first, on the before condition, they showed a lot of potential leads, but then after the training, the parameters that showed statistical significance in differentiating the emotions were fewer, which we interpreted was probably because the singers now had a better or sort of simpler way of expressing the emotion. And we were left with SPL, alpha ratio, HNR, and F1 as markers of emotion in the voice quality. So the ending conclusion is that it seems to be possible to train emotion expression through training voice quality. And after practicing, you will get better at communicating your emotional intent. The whole book is free to download. If you wish, you can access it via the code there. Thank you so much.